We're going to do a roll call of commissioners before we get started. Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammie. Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil. Commissioner Cantania.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz. And Commissioner Woo.
Present.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, welcome again. This is the briefing portion of the planning commission. That means that cases are heard preliminarily. And there will be no public testimony or questions from the public at this time. I'm going to read through today's agenda. Under briefing, we have two items for today, and they are as follows. Agenda item A is D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty-three dash zero one eight nine three or thirty-eight twelve Foster Street. This is new construction of five-story apartment building. Briefing agenda item B is D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty-four dash zero two nine six one at one hundred First Avenue. That is a change of use to multi-unit residential and interior and exterior renovations. I'm going to go back up to briefing agenda item A, reading that in again. And those who are presenting for that can make your way up to this row here. Next to Mr. Gregory, please, and thank you. That's briefing item A, D C T dash Z D R dash twenty twenty-three dash zero one eight nine three at thirty-eight twelve Foster Street. This is new construction of a five-story apartment building in the lower Lawrenceville neighborhood. Also, note, thank you for coming in. It feels good to see a full house of folks. So you may begin, Greg.
So much, Commissioner Burton Falk. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Will Gregory. I'm a planning manager with the zoning developer view division. It's my great pleasure to introduce this project. This is an application for the new construction of a five-story apartment building at thirty-eight twelve Foster Street. It's in the Riv I M U zoning district in the lower Lawrenceville neighborhood. And it's before the commission today at the project development plan. Give the Z D R number already. The application includes site improvements, new construction of a five-story apartment building for three hundred and thirty-four dwelling units. The proposed structure includes two hundred and forty-five individual parking spaces on the first floor, and elevated amenity courtyards on the second floor, which are enclosed by the building off of it. In addition, the applicants are proposing a fifty-five stall parking lot across thirty-eighth street to provide additional parking. All told, the project is still under the maximum parking cap for the riverfront second district. Is this thing on the side as a warehouse complex? Yes, but all the structures will be demolished as part of this project. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment for this case. Proposed structure and site design were reviewed by design staff and then by the professional design advisory panel, C D A, in December of last year. The panels pleased overall with the design. They did suggest further study of how the railroad elevation meets the trail, how the building meets the sky and ground, as well as exploring opportunities to provide a more forested corridor at the primary entrance through use of operable windows and openings. The stormwater management plan for the project is still under review. This application is subject to the inclusionary housing overlay under section nine oh seven dot oh four. This requires that ten percent of all dwelling units shall be inclusionary units for this project. That means that thirty-four inclusionary dwelling units will be required. The project requires one bonus point to exceed sixty feet in height. The project is pursuing the bonus point for public trail under section nine fifteen dot oh seven dot C. That runs along the rear of the site. The project proposes connect the trail to the rear building to an existing trail outside the boulevard concept. The project is under the sixty-five foot height threshold for the upper story step back and is not required to provide the upper story step back. Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, or DOMI, has approved the project's access to transportation impacts. There is no registered community organization or R C O in this area, so no development activities needed or D A was required for this. And at this point, that's all I have to say, so I'll turn over to the development teams to patiently waiting to take us to their presentation.
Well, thank you. I want to thank all the commissioners for taking a look at our projects. It's going to be the first project that we've done in the city of Pittsburgh. So my name's Eric Law. I'm vice president of development for Dalian. Dalian is a national mixed-use multifamily developer. We have about three thousand units in our pipeline and constructed portfolios concentrated in the mid-Atlantic and the southeast, and we build across the spectrum of housing from, you know, capital A affordable housing with, you know, subsidies, housing tax credits, all the way to luxury high-rises with, you know, whole foods in the ground. Next slide. So, you know, obviously, this is the first time that we're working in Pittsburgh. We have a, you know, our entire design team is local, so they've helped us navigate what I consider to be a very complex process in Pittsburgh. But as you can see, we've kind of completed some of the, some of the utility and, you know, site planning process already, and we've engaged with it, even though it was not required. We have engaged with the local community last year was our initial touch point with Lawrenceville Corporation. And we recently completed a public meeting with Lawrenceville Corporation, Lawrenceville United, to get feedback from them. Currently, what we're anticipating is, you know, if the approval process goes well, we hope to start construction on the project at the end. So the zoning summary?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Jeff Young, principal with Perkins Easton Architects. I'll carry the show on from here. Will has done a good job of highlighting the data points of this. It's an adroit development. It's in the Riv, three hundred and thirty-four units, ten percent of which are affordable. We are providing somewhere in the order of three hundred parking spaces. Two hundred and forty-five of those spaces will be integral to the building beneath the building, and we'll talk about how that is working. And then separately, under a separate zoning application, will be a fifty-five car surface parking lot directly across the street from this building. We have the requisite number of bike parking spaces, the majority of which are integral and beneath the building. Excellent. So the site here is bounded by Thirty-Ninth Street, let's call it to the north, Thirty-Eighth to the south, Foster Street to the east, and the Allegheny Valley Railroad tracks to the west. Next. You know, very well, there you go. So, and what you can see in this particular image is that additional surface parking lot just south of Thirty-Ninth Street, which again is operating under a separate Z D R process, but you can see it's quite proximate to the site. Next. The site right now, it's pretty scrappy, right? It's made up of a number of industrial buildings, a lot of scrub land. The edges are not particularly well-defined. The sidewalks haven't actually continue it, continue all the way around the site. All of that will obviously be rectified with the new development. I think the other thing that's noteworthy here is the, what's interesting about this site is it it bridges the gap between kind of the larger-scale industrial properties that still exist south and west of the site. There's the newish Arsenal Development to the north, which has a certain scale. And then there's this kind of smaller, finer grain of the row houses that we've all come to to know and love in Lawrenceville directly east. Next. And some of those additional photos, and you can see across that top row there where the scale changes from these sort of large shed buildings of the industrial neighborhood, south and west. And then the upper right is the newer development of Arsenal. Next. So the front door of the building is on Foster Street with service and garage entrances on Thirty-Ninth Street. Being mindful where the traffic light is at Butler Street, it's at Thirty-Ninth and Butler, so a straight shot down Thirty-Ninth Street. The introduction of the, or the continuation of the trail easement along the western edge is part of this project. You know, we're creating that green space, holding on for the future when that trail gets connected along the waterfront here. Next. So what's special about this site, or what's unique about this site is there's about a fifteen-foot drop-off from the Foster side of the site to the railroad track of the railroad side of the site. And within that fifteen-foot zone, we're able to tuck or bury the parking beneath the building, which is a really great thing and a benefit to the neighborhood. We don't have any kind of exposed parking to above grade or some super garage that we're trying to clad. All of that is hidden generally beneath grade. And what it means is the Foster Avenue side or Foster Street side of the property is revealed only as about a five-story building, the residential component. It drops off to be the full five-over-one dimension along the railroad track side. As I mentioned, entrances, vehicular entrances and loading are at the top of the page on Thirty-Ninth Street. There are two distinct elevator towers inside of the building. And again, this is the interval parking of about two hundred and forty-five spaces. Next. The building is organized in a figure-eight shape with two distinct exterior courtyards that are confined, and they don't bleed out into the surrounding neighborhood. One courtyard is a little bit more passive. The other has a swimming pool. And again, it's self-contained within the property. Street improvements all the way around the site, planting upwards of eighty trees that aren't out there right now. New curbs, sidewalks, and then the greening of the railroad trail on the west side. Next. So we're going to go through a few different renderings of the property right now. This is a bird's eye view, of course, sort of sitting over the housing scale of Lawrenceville and looking west toward the river. You can see that the elevation facing on Foster is more filigree, more articulated, more human scale to relate to the smaller scale of the rowhouse rain on that side of the property. Next. This is the main corner of the building. When you approach on Thirty-Ninth Street and Foster on your left side there, that is the front door just to the left of that corner there. Next. And now looking down Foster, you have the activated corner on the right side, the broken-down scale of the mousing just beyond that. Next. And then we start to swing around the building. Now, we're on Thirty-Ninth, looking back toward the corner of Foster and Thirty-Ninth Street. We begin to articulate the facade with a range of materials. It's a very limited palette. We'll show you what that is in a moment. That's all very intentional. There, we're, through the use of color and texture and profile, we're creating a variety and variation across the facade. You know, being really thoughtful about how light might hit, a lap siding dimension that varies from a wider panel to a narrower panel. Next. This is the Allegheny Valley Railroad side of the site, the western side of the site. You see the track in foreground there. And again, creating some articulation with this banding, that's a metal panel system that, you know, begins to define the volumes a little bit differently. Next. And this is just kind of mid-block along Thirty-Eighth Street. You can start to see the parking garage podium reveal itself as the street, you know, falls away from the site. That is polished concrete down there with the kind of restrained palette up above for the housing block. Next. This is the corner of Thirty-Eighth and Foster. I think one thing that's noteworthy here in the foreground, there's actually a little cutout. It's a Peoples Gas Utility Building that's actually not part of the property that Dalian owns. Dalian, for the better part of a year and a half, has been in contact and conversations with Peoples to find ways to make improvements to that property by way of a screen wall. And we certainly have some thoughts and ideas about how to make it feel homogenous with the remainder of the development we want. It's in everybody's interest to beautify that corner and make it part of the whole of the development. Next. And then the front door at, on Foster Street, near the Thirty-Ninth Street side of the of the property, as you can see, or you might see, there's kind of a wood column there. We are introducing a mass timber wood frame system in the public areas of the first floor, your arrival zone, student, resident lounges, co-working space for the residents, all enhanced by this kind of beefed-up structure that reveals itself on the exterior in kind of a human way. Next. Here's that palette I was mentioning. Really, it consists mostly of fiber cement panels, you know, very durable, weather's well, that come in both flat, narrow lap siding and wide lap siding. There's a wood look panel primarily on the Foster Street side of the property. There's some wood accents at the handrails of all of the balconies around the perimeter. There's a stone masonry component that's also in Foster that again breaks up the the scale a little bit and makes it a little bit more human and a little bit more related to the brick masonry of the row houses across the street. Next. And then here's a key plan of how that begins to deploy itself across the facade, just using the Foster Street side as a sampling of that. Next. And then just the elevations of all the sides of the building. Again, at the top, Foster Street being more articulated, more scaled and broken down relative to that scale on that side of the property. The trail side with that up and over play that we've created massing-wise. Next. And then the long sides of the building is a long site, but you can see how that grade change is something that we're trying to take full advantage of by limiting the scale of the building on the right side of the plan or apologies, the Foster side of the plan versus the railroad side of the plan. Next. Construction management plan. The primary construction entrance will be on the Thirty-Ninth Street side of the property. Again, thinking about where traffic will come off of Butler at the traffic light. There will be a secondary entrance, which is really more for the personnel and the construction workers. And I think, you know, another benefit here, utilizing that open surface lot as a place to stage and park construction vehicles will be a benefit to the neighborhood. One less thing to maneuver in the neighborhood. There are no drive lane closures. The parking lane will be closed, and obviously, the sidewalk will be closed off for the duration of the construction. Next. Just a lot of the details you would expect, you know, the typical working hour, street closures, dust control, sound mitigation, traffic mitigation, an onsite superintendent that'll be a point of contact for the neighbors. I know Dalian personally is extremely interested in being a good neighbor during construction. We're certainly mindful that the neighbors just went through a pretty big construction job with Arsenal two oh one in the past couple of years, and, you know, Dalian wants to start off on the right foot and be a good neighbor. Next. Sustainability side, the project is seeking to achieve N G B S, Bronze Certification, National Green Building Standards. Certainly being thoughtful about the right plant types and plant materials native to the area, building recycling programs, dark sky compliance with our light fixtures, and certainly the introduction of green space where it doesn't exist right now near the railroad. I think what's noteworthy on the stormwater management side is two storage containers are going to be located on-site beneath the building to take off some of that load from the neighborhood. Next. Finally, our accessibility plan, you know, resolving, you know, all entrances are accessible. There's a ramp at the front door. We had it. We do have a set of stairs on Foster Street, but there's a well-defined and gracious ramp or sloped walk. Actually, it's not even a ramp. It's a sloped surface that gets you to the front store on Foster Street. Two distinct elevator banks at both ends of the long direction of the site. We have accessible units within the building per code and certainly making the appropriate sidewalk improvements around the perimeter. And if you ever have a chance to be over there, they're in pretty bad shape right now, so proper accessible crosswalks and ramps at the corners and et cetera. Next. I'll turn over to Cindy for traffic.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Cindy Jemple. I'm the president and CEO of Trans Associates Engineering Consultants. We did the traffic and parking study for the project after getting an approved scope from DOMI, submitted our report to DOMI, received comments back, and we have responded to their comments. And we wait for their final response and approval of the comments responses that we sent in. Most of our material's already been mentioned. The number of parking spaces lies in the range of the Riv minimum to maximum. We have the number of bike spaces that are required, A D A spaces, and there's also bicycle parking available outside for visitors to the building as well. Our study recommends going from a two-way stop to a four-way stop control at the Foster and Thirty-Ninth Street intersection. And that should be a benefit to people traveling by all modes through the intersection and also applying stop signs to the exits from the parking garage and from the parking lot that's across Thirty-Eighth Street. In addition, we've, as we always do, have developed a transportation demand management plan. It's two pages long. I won't read it all to you, but focuses on making the residents of the building aware of their transportation options with respect to public transit, walking, biking, and finding ways to share various modes with each other. The bike rooms have already been mentioned, and the bike room will have a workbench and a few tools to make biking even more easy and pleasant. And if anyone has questions on the extreme particulars, I'm here to present this. But otherwise, that's the brief summary of the transportation study.
Excellent. That's all.
And then is there one more slide? There we go. Yeah, the pretty slide.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Well, since that concludes the presentation, at this time, commissioners, if we have questions or comments related to this application, now is our time. Commissioner Woo?
Yeah, I just had a question about the, in the beginning of the PowerPoint, it said that you're in the floodplain overlay district. Are all the residential units above that? Is it just the parking garage that's in the floodplain?
That's correct.
And is there any, I guess, you said there are tanks, underground tanks, right, that could store stormwater?
Correct.
How big are those tanks?
They're approximately eight foot in diameter. Hey, Hager, P V E, we're civil engineering for a project. Yeah, their tanks are be located underneath the pedestrian bike trail along the railroad tracks between the building and the tracks. And that stormwater is there to maintain all the proposed impervious of the site. And the existing site doesn't have any stormwater at all, even though it's mostly impervious as well. So we mean all that, we've been through the review with city planning, as well as with P L I and our stormwater management plan have been approved. It's now currently with Allegheny County Conservation District for final agreement approval.
Did you hear all of that, Commissioner Woo?
I did, yeah. Thanks for the response.
You're welcome.
That looks like that concludes Commissioner Woo. Commissioner Dick?
Yes, several questions for Cindy Jemple. Is the proposed new four-way intersection at Foster and Thirty-Ninth, I believe? That's not going to, is that not going to have a audible pedestrian crossing?
Oh, that's not going to be a traffic signal. That's just a four-way stop.
Yeah, I understand that, but so there's no plan for any kind of a signal there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. I know. Thank you. For the builders, just two quick questions. I assume from what you said that all of the entrances to the proposed building are accessible?
That is correct.
Okay. And is the new trail, which I'm not familiar with, I should be, I guess, is that going to utilize the old railroad bed or go beside the Allegheny Valley Railroad?
It's beside the bed at this stage.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Cantania. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to say, obviously, this is such a big improvement from what we have right now. I think that during the C D A, I don't know if you did the presentation, but we have a couple, we had a couple of discussions, but I want to bring them up again because I still have some of this concern. I think for me, the concern number one is, you know, it's a really nice building, but if you look at it from the perspective of a person walking on Thirty-Ninth Street, that corner of the building, basically, it doesn't say, you know, this is an arrival spot. You know, it's not a welcoming from the long distance of going down Thirty-Ninth Street, which is the direction that most people are going to come down, you know. Same thing happens on Thirty-Eighth, which I get Thirty-Eighth, there's a problem with Peoples Gas and all that. Although you have done some really great job with what you're doing in the roof of one of the buildings, where the main entrance is at. You know, I think that's like a nice terrace, so at least that makes it a little bit more inviting. I just think that Thirty-Ninth Street, it's kind of like missing some up there. We talked about that. Yeah.
Presentation, please, thank you.
Even right there, you know, so I think we talked about this facade, you know, and how like the ground floor, it's, you know, I think one of the young folks from the C D A mentioned about more glass to be able to look more in. But my point that I brought up was to be able to make that entrance so that it feels like there's something there, a destination there. You know, especially if you want to engage, the people are going to live there and say like, that's my home, you know. And so for me, the fact that you guys put the main entrance into the building on, what is it, on Foster? Yeah, on Foster, you know. It means that the front of your building is basically facing residential housing rather than facing those corners, which are very, very important. You know, so that's something that I think we brought up the last time. I have three other concerns, or two other concerns, I think. The other one is the exposure of the garage on Thirty-Ninth and Thirty-Eighth. And I understand that there is a difference in elevation, which is great that you're able to hide the garage at least along Foster. But as the garage is being exposed, I mean, can you imagine what it would be as a pedestrian walking down the sidewalk and looking at then cars there, you know? And if there could be something done there to mitigate that, I think it would be super beneficial, not only for, you know, the people are walking up and down, but also people are going to be living there, right? They're going to be looking at the garages and walking to the, to the trail. I think another thing that we talked about before was, you know, the building along both of those facade, again, you know, it's a very long building, and I get it, you know, because that is the size of the lot. If there was a way for that building to either break up a little bit and/or even the corners to have some different in height, because as is right now, and I think there's a really great shot if you keep scrolling through, but you're going to see a shot that just shows the whole long facade, that's toward the river. Yeah.
On the opposite side?
On the left or the right of this building. There we go. Yeah, if you see that, I mean, it's just a very long, it almost looks like a box that was just plotted there, you know? And so have something that actually breaks the building a little bit so that it does go back to the human scale. You are kind of doing a little bit of that along Foster by breaking it up. It almost looked like three different buildings, so that's great. But then on these sides, on both sides, it just looks like a big, you know, Amazon box, basically, that just got a plot there, rather than having more of that articulation in. Not to go crazy, but I'm just thinking something that at least takes back the scale of what Lawrenceville is about, like you mentioned. Yeah, I think those are the only things that I wanted to bring up that we talked about before, but yeah.
Can I address those? Yeah, so I think, I think, so your first comment about the entrance and the corner of Foster and Thirty-Ninth Street, we absolutely believe it's going to be a welcoming and clear place of arrival for this building. There is a greater amount of glass here at this location. We expect this to glow, right, as being kind of the lounge and the heartbeat of the building with soft seating and pantry space and whatnot. There's actually a feature stair inside of there. The other view, you might be able to see it's a spiral stair that creates another level of visual interest and whatnot. I think the renderings don't do justice, I believe, to a feeling like the front door of the building or the most pedestrian welcoming part of the building at. That is the main and main corner of the site. We absolutely, there's no question about it. I think the way we've articulated the building to kind of I think the way we've articulated the building to kind of skew back to draw you to the front door with the column almost being like your mailbox on a, you know, scales different. We think there are cues there that are, that are actually making it feel quite welcoming at that location. Your second comment about the base, we are actually, we are screening the openings. We, we need to have openings to allow for natural ventilation of the parking garage. We are providing screening inside of those openings to create some additional articulation and screening of those vehicles, and they will be below you as, as you're walking, as you're making your way down. So we don't think you're seeing a heck of a lot of kind of hoods and, and tires and whatnot as you're making your way down. There, there is some articulation and some screening that's going on there. And then I think finally, yeah, I mean, I think we're taking a, a slightly different approach about how to break up the massing of a large building. Right? We, we, we are attempting to do this in a much more subtle, but perhaps sophisticated way by creating these pileasters of a, a small exposed lap siding that is parkinging to the pileasters that we found in a lot of the buildings around Lawrenceville. And Shipp District was, I mean, the Terminal Markets is a building that's five times the length of this building almost. But what is kind of spectacular about that building is the, the sort of orderliness of these pileasters that are happening every so many feet. We see that on, on other buildings at Arsenal Middle School across the way. And there's some other, I think the Trip Hotel has a similar grain to it. We are trying to introduce a comparable grain that's not arbitrarily manipulating the volume of the building just because we're, we're really mindful of making this building sing, even though it's large by way of these smaller moves, whether it's the pileaster or the introduction of the balconies protruding at certain moments across the, the length of the facade, introducing a wider lap siding, having flat metal, uh, flat laps, flat fiber cement board as well. And being really thoughtful about how the sun is going to catch each of those different elements. A flat surface is going to catch it differently than a narrow lap siding, than a wide lap siding, than a metal panel, the reflectivity of a metal panel versus the fiber cement board is going to be different. And we, we believe that the variation of that vocabulary of material is what's going to make this building sing and not some arbitrary, no disrespect, volume change that, that, uh, that'll have a slightly deeper shadow than what these, these moments are going to create shadow-wise.
But I appreciate that, but if I may just, respectfully disagree. A lot of the things that you're talking about are things that architects, and I'm an architect, I, I went to architecture school, masters in architecture, so I understand that. I think for the reg, for anybody else, they would just look at a gray box. And so, and I'm, again, I'm not saying like do a lot of crazy stuff because I'm also really much against that crazy, you know, a lot of crazy over-articulation of facades. But just something so that it breaks it up. The, a lot of the buildings that you mentioned are buildings that used to be public buildings. So public building has a different relationship and facade than a private building or residential building. This is a residential building. It should, it should have more of that residential context, but. And I also disagree with your corner. I understand that you're saying that you're going to basically put in more glass by putting more glass and activating the inside. Unless you have people a hundred percent of the time there, from the street is still going to look like a fishbowl, you know? And that's the reason why main doors are always located at your one hundred percent corner so that it's active if people walking in and out all the time. So I'm, I'm just, those, those are my concerns that I have and I still have them. And I think, yeah, that I think that it's a really great building and I think it'll be, it'll be fantastic addition to the neighborhood. And I think, you know, those little snippets are things that I still have concern over.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner, might it be helpful for the next time they're here to maybe put a rendering in sort of context of the community and kind of getting a feel for if you were all four ways, what that would look like and what that rhythm would sort of feel like a little bit differently? Would that, would that help you to visualize it differently?
I think, I think the, 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 what he was mentioning about the different of materials, you know, and that kind of articulation is one that because the shade is all one color, you know, it's more like a shadow study that you have to do in order for you to really see how that's going to play a role on our last with material. So I don't know how much that would help.
Would, would there be something that you would like to see when they come back?
Maybe if anything, a better rendering of that corner, the, the Thirty-Ninth and Foster. Like I said, you know, Thirty-Eighth and Foster, I get it, you know, it's out of your control. Like I said, I do applaud you for what you did up on the top. That looks really great. Almost, it's very inviting up there. Thirty-Ninth and Foster is, to me, just feels like it's, it's, looks more like an office building than anything else.
Good.
Commissioner Maza? Yes, Steve Maza, a couple of questions on the construction. Is that on the, the podium parking garage? Is that ported place or is that precast?
Port concrete.
Ported place so that, that polished concrete panel, how ma, how many, how long will those panels be? Or be consistent just from the one side halfway through where it's exposed?
Yeah, the base.
Yeah, I mean, there will be joints at every column. And certainly, and then there are openings for each, you know, for view, not view, but for air inside the garage.
Will that be clear coated or would that be stained? Okay, now the, Mr. Malano, are you guys going to act as GC on the project? You have somebody you're going to hire, local contractor, we hope? Okay. Is that stick frame panel, panelized, metal framed?
It's, it could be stick built or panelized. We haven't selected a contractor yet, so the means and methods are still to be determined.
Just talk about, again, the mass timber portion of the, the project. Is that going to be where the the one part where?
It's, it's specifically that two-story volume at the corner there. So that's a double-height lobby space.
Is it going to be a post, post tension type, mass timber type thing, post tension or?
It's not, it's not mass, it's not post tension. It's just, you know, it's just the heavy timbers that are all going to be exposed instead of, you know, conventional framing. It'll, it'll, we're, we're, we're revealing the structure there to make it special and, and, you know, active at that corner.
Okay, thank you.
And so in closing, I'll make a few comments myself. I do appreciate the color contrast, places where you have chosen to, you know, use bump outs and then, you know, pushing back. I think that for residents that would live there, I think the, the real benefit and the true amenity is light throughout the entire building by having not one, but two courtyards. I think that that's going to be very helpful for, for residents that stay there because the more light you can get circulating on the inside of units, the better. I do think that something different will happen when you're looking at not necessarily the rendering of the, the parking garage, but I can see why it looks like the, the deep abyss when you're kind of looking at it from a side view. So I, I get that, but I, I do appreciate the places in which you've changed up the, the rhythm. And I'm also understanding Commissioner Quintanilla where, where he's looking for some of the, the block and the color to, to change a little bit, just to give a, a little bit of a different perspective in terms of color palette. So appreciate the presentation. We'll see you back in two weeks. Thank you very much for your time and for making it.
Of course, thank you.
Have a great rest of your day.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to give this team a few moments to go ahead and step out and then we'll move to agenda item B, which is as follows. PPT dash ZDR dash twenty twenty-four dash zero two nine six one at one hundred First Avenue. This is a change of use to multi-unit residential and interior and exterior renovations in the central business district. Presenting that here this afternoon is Ms. Meridian. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Could you please come up with a design team?
Yes, I've got a list of, but I don't see anybody else.
Should be two more.
There wasn't Courtney earlier. There's a, and I just.
Should we start?
I think we can proceed. Send right Michael. Yep.
Do you please introduce yourself first?
Yes.
And also that people in the Zoom first introduce to kind of check the sound.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon. I'm Travis Tar with PWG Architects. And this is Michael Polite with Beacon Communities. He, our, our kind of leader on the project. And then online, we have Lisa Carver, the principal at PWG Architects. For questions and such after the presentation takes place.
Thank you.
Shall I start?
I, or you?
Introduce yourself if you do.
Sure, I'm Michael Polite. I'm the Senior Vice President for Development for Beacon Communities.
And could you please, Lisa, introduce yourself to check the sound?
Sure. My name is Lisa Carver. I'm a principal with PWG. As Travis mentioned, he will really be presenting the project and I will be available for any questions as needed. Thank you.
The one hundred market building is going to be rehab and reused for multi-residential. The current use is office and one hundred percent is affordable house. Uh, this building has three items that should be coordinated to be complied with the zoning code. One was unprotected bike ride. The other one was the street trees. And the last one was the loading space that it should be in the street. Um, the parking, the parking requirement is zero for the downtown GT Street. And design staff review and there is no comment for that. There was a development activity meeting is held on May ninth, twenty twenty-four. And they reviewed the project. Domi approved the unprotected sidewalk bicycle and also the forestry review the proposed design. And they don't have any comment. Zoning administrator and Domi authorize the location and the number of the loading space. And the last one, because this project exceed the constructional cost of the exterior design. It's required to review by the commissioner and consider as a project development plan project. So I will share.
Oh, you got started. There's a hand raised in the chat for Barbara McCourtney and Gray. Is that part of your team?
That's Tom Schuster.
They're actually welcome.
So it's ready for your team?
The presentation is ready for announcement.
Okay, so I'll get started then. I'll give you just a quick introduction of Beacon Communities. Then just an overview sort of what we're trying to accomplish all for the project in terms of the, the public policy that's driving it. So Beacon Communities is a Boston-based firm that's been in the Pittsburgh area over about seven years now. We're a fifty-year-old company with developments going on in twelve states and Washington DC. About twenty thousand apartments under management. And that's in about one hundred and sixty-five developments overall. We specialize in affordable housing, so we use all the tools and we're going to use a few of them to redevelop this property. But we are a development management company, long-term owner. This is essentially one of the applications of our, our bread and butter, creating long-term affordable housing deals. And so this property, actually, we started to look at it before the arrival of the, essentially the special money that's been set aside to support the downtown conversion deals. But of course, that downtown conversion money, together with housing authority resources, really filled our gap. So our development is on the order of a forty-one billion dollar development to create these ninety-three one-bedroom apartments. Hundred percent of the apartments will be affordable. All ninety-three will have support from the housing authority. All ninety-three will be set aside for folks at sixty-two years of age plus. We will have within the development, a support service program. We're already working with, for instance, the UPMC insurance system to bring services into the property, which again is sort of the way we approach these. You know, you create an asset and then you support people who live there so that they can be successful and continue to live independently as long as you possibly can. So resources from the city, housing authority will obviously have bank money and a significant light tech equity installment. We're towards the end of our process of raising the money. We have an approval within the next forty-five days coming from Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. Once that happens, I expect we will close this deal in the fourth quarter and then it's a sixteen or eighteen month construction period. And with that, Travis, I'll hand it to you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, the project has, kind of saw in that initial photo, is right on our waterfront of the river there. And we advance to the next slide. And the next one again. Uh, we are in a a, a building that has had two distinct phases so far of its existence. One was part of the warehouse and kind of light industrial waterfront district from around eighteen ninety to nineteen hundred. And then again, in the nineteen eighty-nine, it was having received an addition, we came in office building. And that's the section of the building that faces Market Street was, they added on. And so it's these kind of two phases of the project. And so this really is kind of the third act for this structure is to create the conversion for the residential use. Uh, we are going to proceed with a completely comprehensive process to essentially preserve the structural components of the building. But then almost everything else is new from building systems, building envelope and interior components. There are the ninety-three residential units, but then also we have a higher level of accessibility than required by code with a commitment for twenty-eight accessible units within the building. And there's also roughly ninety-three thousand square feet of gross area in the project. Next slide, please. Yeah, so here we have some images of the adjacent contacts. It's not in the first side historic district, but directly next to it. And so there is a lot of beautiful brick buildings, examples of this warehouse type and also other adapted reuse projects very near us, including right across the street, the series of towns. And then for our building itself, we are eleven stories. The eleventh floor was also added in the nineteen eighty-nine addition to create this cornice elements with the slope curves. And if we advance a few more, we will get to the main facade. So all of these punched openings and such are going to receive new windows. But we really believe in the quality of the existing building with, with respecting and working with the masonry condition that we have. The I'm sorry, Miriam, I will ask you to step back to the site plan. Then I'll walk up through the structure. Then I'll walk up through the structure. Okay, one forward. So here's our overall site plan. Where the existing building has its open corner, where it was the entrance to the office building. But the, its accessible entrance was tucked under an arcade on Market Street. So we will seek to activate this corner entrance with a new accessible ramp that wraps up and around the small courtyard townhouse space. Oh, sorry, you were, this is perfect.
Yes.
And along with the series of this landscaping and street tree improvements that you see here with compliant street wells and three sidewalk-based exterior bicycle racks. And then the next page, please. The bicycle parking is a mixture of this exterior, three exterior racks, but then we'll be providing an interior bike storage room for the remainder of the spaces in our basement. Using a double-decker rack for kind of the most efficient use of space in our building. And then next slide, please. The existing building doesn't have any parking, a parking lot or any parking spaces. They currently utilize the First Avenue side of the structure for trash service and a building-based loading dock. We look to utilize that same position for our trash service to have our trash room and trash chute in the building where we can park a trash truck outside and then pick up and service the building there. In this location, it's a one-way heading toward Stanwicks. And right now, there's actually no parking on the street at all. So it's really, it seems to be work quite well from a particular circulation standpoint. There is curb parking along Market Street. And we do propose to provide a space for a van, a mobility van parking with loading on the passenger loading side, which would likely reduce the number of street parking to four or five spaces from five or six that currently exist between the One Market and our corner on First Avenue. We can walk through the building plans now. Here's our basement level, which is in filled with community spaces on our ground floor. We have the first voice shown as the next slide. Has our community room and office spaces for the building services, series of units that also some face a internal light well and some face the external street faces. As we step up in the building to the second floor, now, next slide, please, for the third through the seventh. And then next slide again for the 8th, 10th, and then finally on our 11th floor plan. All of the, next slide for that. All of the units are the same with a one-bedroom use profile for the senior housing our user group. And hold here for a second, this is our material and design elements. As I mentioned before, the existing building has a really beautiful character. There's the 1890s of wing of the building that has a, I'd say Roman-style block with a long, thin profile. And then the 1989 edition has a brick veneer wall with modular brick, two different shades. And so our renovation concept is to kind of expose and highlight the difference of this third use in the building by using these series of darker materials from the base to the infill at the first and second floors with new windows and then also infilling an existing ribbon window on the cornice line. In all these cases, we are making some choices based on the energy performance of the building. And so where there are curtain walls and ribbon windows, we need to create an insulated building envelope from the inside. And so there's a reduction of the glazed area of the existing building. But then all of these residential spaces still have large and expansive windows with the views to downtown. Next slide, please. And then this elevation on First Avenue, you can see the building corner, which currently has a, the inset corner has a curtain wall condition that we'd be replacing the curtain wall with solid, a solid wall of metal panels to further accentuate the vertical nature of this 11-story building. Next slide, please. And next slide again. We do have our interior lotline wall, which is up against the adjacent condominium building. On this side, it's really just repointing and repair. And then there is a case of a ribbon window along the top edge that was, isn't really a legal location for openings. And so we're replacing that with a solid wall. And at the very top 11th floor. Next slide, please. The next three slides are just our ground floor exterior renderings. The first here is an exterior perspective from Market Street, which illustrates the community room on the ground floor. And we've actually infilled the existing arcade to the floor level of the first level. And the user, the building occupants will be able to step out of the community room onto a small terrace. There'll be some spaces for them, for a table and chairs, and then also a walkway to the corner for the small outdoor seating area. And next slide, please. This shows the view of the corner. We do have a really interesting streetscape here with some dolgin block and brickwork on the sidewalk. And we propose that all of this remains. And then we have, this shows the this image shows the ramp that wraps up around the corner. There's an indication for building signage, which of course would be a different process subject than this one. But then you see the new building entrance, which is essentially the same building entrance that we have now, but then created in this dark polished color. Next slide, please. This last image is the view of the First Avenue elevation, which is our, more of our service side of the building, where the double doors at the center are for the trash service. And this generally matches the building condition now, where you have your fire department connection, a loading dock and an exit door. Let's, let's back up two slides, which shows the, that one there. Because that's the, that's a nice, really nice, nice one. And that's the end of the presentation.
Okay. All right, land on the nice picture. Appreciate that. Commissioners, at this time, that concludes the presentation. Do we have any questions or comments as it relates to this application? Questions?
Oh, I think she had her at first.
Who is that?
No, Commissioner Ruiz.
Hi, I'm sorry. I may have missed it, but what is currently in that building right now?
The current building has an office use as a whole. There was a lot of lawyers and architects in the past, much like much of the downtown area. It's
It's essentially empty, there's one, I think there's one tenant whose lease expires the end of 2025. So essentially, it works out with getting a construction.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes, thank you very much.
It looks like, you're welcome, it looks like there's a question from Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, just, just a comment. I applaud the adaptive reuse of this building. I think, you know, and, and having a big senior housing, I think is definitely a good step toward diversifying the the housing options that are available downtown. So you're kind of killing two birds with one stone. You're, you know, you're adding more housing downtown and you're, you're also taking a building that's mostly vacant and, and and reusing it. So yeah, I, I think this will be a good addition to the downtown area.
Final comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, Commissioner, I can tell you, I just have a couple of common questions. One is, are you changing the color of the roof? The pitch roof, right now it's green.
Yeah, right now, the, that cornice element has a tan tone. And then the roof itself, yes, has a, has a green color and it's a steel standing scene roof assembly. And we have a, a element of our construction documents go to paint and recote that roof. So we have the opportunity to change its color. And also change, potentially change the color of the cornice element now. The kind of relatively conservative approach that we should remember rendering is somewhat of just maintaining the existing condition as is and kind of matching back to that. But there is the opportunity to, say, alter or enhance the, that top slope roof area.
I understand why I bring that up is because I'm actually looking at Google Earth here at the building and it is the one thing about that building that is very 1970s, I feel. You know, it has, it has a bit of an age look to it because of the green. And maybe, maybe some other fresher color, more modern color would be nice. And then I do have a question about the windows, the mullions. You have windows that are like a big square, glass square, and then two smaller on the side. Is that because those are operable?
Yes, in each of one of these window blocks for the main kind of type, the smallest square is the operable portion. And the kind of main condition for that is our, all of our units will receive fresh air from a building-wide system. And outside air heat recovery ventilator will push air in and push air out for each unit. So we don't need operable windows from a fresh air or environmental perspective. But we want to provide an operable panel from a requirement of the state's plan check, but also from a, just a kind of psychological element of, I'll open the window. And that it's on a small lower, it's in the lower portion of the block within accessible reach ranges. These windows are six foot, six foot, six tall. And so it, right now they have double sliders and then impossible to use. So one, to some point, we're kind of limiting the size to make it within accessible reach range, but still have the ability to open and close.
Okay, I think it's because I appreciate what you're doing with the facade, which is really nice. From what I could see from the rendering, and I almost would love to see something with the mullions that, or the windows themselves, that is a little bit more of a historical aspect to it. And, and I don't know what that could look like, but I get what you mean and the reason for, for that. And I appreciate the fact that there are operable windows, which is something we need more. But yeah, just some, I mean, obviously what the facade that you see there, those windows are obviously not historical, you know? And they, again, they look like it was done in the 80s, you know? And I'm almost wondering if there's a way that a window could be a little bit more historical, not 100%, of course, because they're very expensive, right? But that at least has a little bit more of that quality.
Yeah.
Maybe the proportions of, of the glass, the glaze itself.
And definitely our window shape now is very much contemporary approach to the way that you would divide the lights.
Right. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Dick?
Yes, did, just you, I'm sure I just didn't hear this, but what is your target date for completion of the project?
Spring of 2026.
Oh, okay. And again, I want to second the other Commissioner's comment that I'm just delighted to see this. The whole building is going to be devoted to affordable housing. Thank you.
And any other comments, Commissioners? In closing, I'd like to say as well, 93 units of affordable for 62 years and above is a really big deal. First of all, you know, a vulnerable population, right? You know, seniors. And obviously with the HUD vouchers, they'd be looking at 30% of their income, which is a missing number of new online units for, for this bracket. I'm assuming that with 93 units, 93 vouchers, vouchers are obviously attached to the units. And these will be maybe folks that are moving from other places and this is coming new. And then those that are getting vouchers, first-time voucher holders, correct?
So project base.
Right.
So the Housing Authority awarded us enough vouchers to cover all the units. These are not replacement for someone or a project that's going on in some other part of town and causing relocation. So this property will have its own waitlist.
Okay.
Right, and so it'll be, now if someone's living someplace else and they want to get on the waitlist, that's totally fine. Once we're, you know, at that point when it's time to start that.
Okay, very good. All right, so that's 93 million units, so excellent. All right, well, in closing, thank you for the presentation and we'll see you back in two. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, it looks like that concludes the briefing portion of today. It is 2:06 and I think that giving us until 2:15? 20? Okay, we knew this Starbucks run. 2:20 will be start time for the hearing and action portion. See you soon. See you soon.
They were there for sit sharing.
Okay, all right, we should be ready to begin.
So do you want to do the? Is the recording in progress?
Yeah, recording is still going.
Excellent. All right, so we are going to call today's meeting back in session. It is exactly two twenty. In the meantime, I just want to have commissioners that are online since we're doing a little bit of a hybrid here. Acknowledge that you're here. The court reporter, you are with us. I see you and thank you very much for being here. I'm gonna. All right, I'm gonna do roll call just to make sure commissioners are present. Commissioner Blackwell? Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick?
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammey. I see you, you're just having challenge unmuting. All right, you're present. Commissioner Maza.
There.
Thank you. Commissioner Cantania?
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz?
Present.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu?
Present.
All right, very good. We are at the hearing and action portion of today's planning commission meeting for June eleven, twenty twenty four. Hearings mean that. Items are presented for action by commission only, but we do not have any of those items on our agenda for today. I'm going to read through the agenda so that we do know what we are going to be presenting. Agenda item A for today is approval of minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is plan of lots. Agenda item four. A no, agenda item D is hearing in action and agenda item E is the director's report. Moving back to agenda item A, we have approval of minutes. Commissioners before us, we have two, I'll take them separately. We have minutes from April second, twenty twenty four. Commissioners, if you have any edits or comments. Now would be that time if hearing none, do we have a motion from the floor to approve?
So I move.
All right, we'll do a move from Commissioner Maza, a second from Commissioner Cantania. I'm gonna go in order for roll. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Gammey.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantania.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to minutes from May fourteen, twenty twenty four. If there are no edits, do I have a motion from the floor for approval? Thank you, Commissioner Cantania, was a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza, I'm gonna take roll call. That is Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammey.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantania.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. We are moving on to agenda item B. Agenda item B is correspondence. Commissioners before us today for June eleven, twenty twenty four. We have regarding the historic designation of Pittsburgh Stained Glass Studios. At one sixty Warden Street in the West End neighborhood. Correspondence from Teresa Kael Smith, council member, district two. That completes correspondence. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item C, plan of lots. We have four items under. Item C, plan of lots, and they are as follows. Item one is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four four five at fourteen seventy River Avenue. That's a major consolidation in Troy Hill. Number two, under plan of lots, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four three seven. Somerset at Frick Park, that's a major consolidation in the Swisshelm Park neighborhood. Item number three, under plan of lots, is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four two nine. Mary Street, major consolidation in the South Side Flats. Item number four, under plan of lots, is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four three five. Ormsby Avenue, major subdivision, and that's in the Mount Oliver neighborhood. I'm going to let Mr. Shepkey, Shepkey take these from here and go through items one through four.
Thank you. The first item that we have for plan of lots is the River Avenue consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on River Avenue, it would be one hundred ninety nine thousand one hundred seventy eight square feet in area. A one-story warehouse building is located on the subject property. And this is a major subdivision or a major consolidation that was first reviewed by the planning commission on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Staff's recommended motion is approval of the River Avenue consolidation. The next item is the Somerset at Frick Park consolidation. This is the proposed consolidation of two parcels. The proposed parcel would have frontage on Ober Street, it would be two million eight hundred seventy nine thousand five hundred seventy one square feet area. The subject property is currently vacant, and this is a major consolidation that was first reviewed by the planning commission on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Staff's recommended motion is approval of the Somerset at Frick Park consolidation. The next item, and next page please. Is the Mary Street lot, or it might be mixed up, is there another one?
There are four total.
Oh yeah, is there another page?
Absolutely.
Yeah, there isn't. Oh, oh, okay, thank you. This is the Mary Street Lot Consolidation, this is the proposed consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on South Nineteenth Street, Mary Street, and South Twenty First Street. It would be two point two one acres in area. A five-story structure is located on the subject property. And this is a major consolidation that was first reviewed by the planning commission on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Staff's recommended motion is approval of the Mary Street Lot Consolidation. And the last item on plan of lots.
Should come.
Yeah, go up one, yeah, this one. Is the Ormsby Avenue subdivision. This is the post subdivision of one parcel into three parcels. The proposed lot one would have frontage on Cathedral Avenue, it would be ten thousand two hundred ninety two square feet area. The proposed lot two would have frontage on Cathedral Avenue and Ormsby Street, it would be twenty seven thousand three hundred seventy five square feet in area. It is a two-story rectory. The proposed lot three would have frontage on Cathedral Avenue and Ormsby Street, it would have forty eight thousand three hundred ten square feet in area. It's a former church. This is a major subdivision that was first reviewed by the planning commission on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. And the recommended motion is to approve the Ormsby Avenue subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Shepkey for reading in items one through four. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony regarding items one through four. Are there any hands raised? There's no one in the room.
No, there's one person online, I mean, you don't have any hands.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So commissioners, at this time, do I have a motion from the floor? Plan of lots, items one through four.
Don't move.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza moved. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Dick, was that Commissioner Dick? Thank you, I'll do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammey.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantania.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. So we move on to agenda item D, which is hearing in action. Today, we have nothing under. Agenda item D for hearing in action for today. Moving on to agenda item E, which is the director's report. I am aware that we are going to have a director's report, and Mr. Lehman, passing it to you.
Thank you very much, commissioners, and thank you to Director Bay. For allowing me to share an update on our Fair Housing Act zoning code amendments. This is an update that comes from the city's ongoing efforts to overhaul overhaul the zoning code. And this is in response to legal evaluation of our zoning code regarding fair housing. During that, the planning commission engaged with the law department to develop a package of zoning code amendments and to renew impediments. Affirmatively further fair housing under the zoning code. As these amendments were being prepared, city council members Gross and Coghill introduced Council Bill twenty twenty three dash twenty one ninety seven. Which was intended to provide a means for certain types of temporary housing that might be an affordable option for those facing homelessness. At the time that that was introduced and referred to the planning commission. The planning staff and the council members met and agreed to work collaboratively to make sure that the fair housing package of amendments that we were working on. Would be supportive of and provide for the types of housing that their bill intended. And among other broader changes that are being considered in that package. The planning commission endorsed this strategy and Commissioners Burton Falk, O'Neil, Cantania, and Ruiz volunteered to co-chair the effort. In April, we convened a larger working group of experts and stakeholders and engaged them in conversations. Around the amendments that we were considering, and then we set up a couple of breakout groups to further meet and discuss. The more significant policy questions that had come up. Staff have taken the initial legal guidance, the feedback that we received throughout the process from the working group. Along with research that we did, best practices and current trends to develop a first draft of the ordinance. Which is nearly ready to be shared publicly. Our, our goal will be to share the draft to the public using the Engage PGH page in two weeks. In the week of June twenty fourth, followed by a briefing of planning commission on July twenty third. And a hearing in action at the planning commission on September third after our August recess. The commission will then forward the legislation to city council for a public hearing and eventually a review and a vote. What's in the upcoming changes, just a reminder of the goals. This is to ensure compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act. To create better alignment between the group housing categories in the zoning code. And the licensing categories and definitions that the state uses for group housing. To promote and provide greater flexibility and opportunity for the development of housing and services for those facing homelessness. And to simplify and broaden access to group housing throughout the city. Some of the highlights of the changes that we're considering. The community home use will be removed because it's redundant and creates confusion among other group housing uses. We're creating a new use category specifically to allow for interim or temporary structures. And uses meant to provide housing for those facing homelessness with the public process and additional flexibility within the code. This is similar to the temporary managed community, managed community legislation that the council members. Introduced and we worked with them to make sure that we were meeting the spirit and. In fact, I would say that we're expanding the, the access and scope of that effort. We're also creating an administrator's exception to allow for the conversion of one group housing or institutional use into a new group housing use. Which allows for more flexibility and quicker process for new transitional and similar group housing uses. Within the existing institutional building stock within the city. We're also making a change to the definition of family, which is to be in line with their house and best practices. Which will be one for household, and that doesn't rely on regulating applications based on family relations. Something I'm excited to be out of the business of. We're, we'll be allowing for accessory dwelling units as accessory to churches and similar community serving uses. We're gonna update the personal care and assisted living use categories to reduce the number of. Size categories and clarify the, the sizes and reduce the, the, the standards. So that they're only the most critical standards necessary for these uses. We're expanding and simplifying the multi-suite residential use category into higher, high-density multi-unit residential districts. And the one group housing category that will not be changed is custodial care. Which will stay as it is currently within the total code. So that concludes my update for the commission. Does anyone have any questions? At first, I should actually note, it doesn't conclude, I take it back. I want to first thank the four commissioners and really the whole commission for your support on this effort. And I want to thank the, the council members for working in a very collaborative spirit with us. And I want to thank the working group members who provided their time and assistance. Which are really critical to us being able to move this forward. Now I'm done.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Commissioners, the floor was open for any questions and or comments. Am I hearing any? Since no, I'll make a comment, Mr. Lehman. Thank you for bringing forth a report for us here today. There's been a lot of work that's gone on as you just mentioned. And it's been a great process to see that go on and then for us to, to be able to come to the table with something very meaningful. So thank you to staff and everyone else involved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With that opposing, I think we may be able to make a motion. Is there a motion out there to adjourn for today's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Very good, day is over, thank you for making it. We did a good job, folks.